Call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for November 6, 2018. And before we begin this evening, I do want to say a special welcome to a group of high school students from Gallatin High School back there. They're waving, they're in Mr. Baker Ring's government class, and they are tasked with attending a city council meeting. Also, a special shout out to Garrett Bracken, voted for the first time today, so that's pretty cool, congratulations to you. So with that, we're going to begin the meeting like we do typically, with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Councilman Alexander to offer the invocation, and Councilman Mayberry will lead us in the pledge, if you'd stand with me, please.
Let it rip, heart, pray. Time to worship God once again, we come to say thank you for this beautiful day that you have allowed us to have for Election Day. We pray of God that this be a great campaign, we thank you for this city and what it stands for, and I bless it still, Lord, that everything we do tonight will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, and every heart said.
Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Ms. Price, there you are. It's going to call the roll for us.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Cant.
Present.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Mayberry.
Here.
We now have a quorum.
Thank you. Before you, you have the minutes from October 2, 2018, meeting and the October 16, 2018 meeting. Have a motion to approve both by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. I'll ask if there are any corrections or additions.
I mean, I read every word.
Thank you, Ms. Love. With that, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The minutes are approved unanimously. At this time, we do have public recognition on agenda-related items. If you have an item that's on this evening's agenda of concern, now would be your time to come forward and address it. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your name and your address. I'd also remind you that this evening, there are three public hearings, so if you are here about any of those items that are on public hearing, you might wish to wait and address the council during the public hearings. There are items one, two, and three on the agenda this evening. With that, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open. And I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed, and we will move forward to Mayor's comments. I do have several events to share with you all. It tis the season. First, I would say that this past weekend, the Gallatin Civic Center Parks and Recreation had their inaugural Turkey Run, and they had over 100 runners, so that's pretty awesome for a first effort, and expect that will grow and grow in years to come. Also, this weekend was the Santa Classic that the Police Department puts on, and you guys had a good time, too. So, thank you all for doing that. I know that helps us do programs here within the city, but it also enhances our community by offering opportunities for our citizens to participate. Coming up, there is, this is in Portland, but it's open to everyone in the county, Southern County Anti-Drug Coalition is hosting a town hall meeting. It's going to be this Thursday from 6 until 7:30 PM, and that's going to be at Portland High School. This Friday is Ms. Hi McCully's birthday, so be sure and wish her a happy birthday. Also, this Friday, late in the afternoon, they're going to be having a Veterans 5K run. It's happening at Triple Creek Park, it happens at 6:30. You might like to come out and support that. This weekend, it's the big annual holiday, Tensile and Treasures Holiday Open House Weekend, happens Saturday and Sunday at various merchants throughout town, how many?
Twenty-seven merchants and 18 booths at the market.
Twenty-seven merchants throughout the community and 18 booths at the Gallatin Farmer's Market, so that's pretty tremendous. Also, a first-time event this year, the 100th Anniversary Celebration of Armistice Day is going to be happening at Historic Stonewall, happens both days as well. On Saturday is the annual Veterans Day Parade, it starts at the Gallatin High School Football Field at 11:00 AM and includes the Gallatin High School. Also this weekend, the Gallatin High School Band Dinner and Auction, the Rotary Club Dinner and Auction, Trailstone Place Open House on Saturday, and a reminder that next Monday, most city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Right now, I would like to invite the organizers of our car show to come forward, Mr. Jim Hall, Mr. Fred Kilman, and gang, because they have a special presentation they'd like to make this evening. Oh, no, is the mic on over at the podium, Mr. Henshaw?
That's all right.
No, we want to hear, we need to hear you, we need to hear you.
I'll speak loud. I'd like to start off by thanking Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Jimmy Overton, City Council, and Public Works, Street Department, Police Department, anybody that's supported our car show for the last two years. We closed out our season this year on October 27 with trunk-or-treat, and if you didn't make it, you missed a good time. We have schedules available for the 2019 season. We think we have a good family venue that a lot of people enjoy. If you haven't been there, you're missing something good. Traditionally, we have donations made for water that we give away free, we have other people that donate funds for whatever we need for expenses, and we do, each year, we try to do something for the community, and this year, we're going to make Chief Bendy happy with a $1,000 donation for Shop With A Cop.
You can't play this to get behind.
[laughing]
with quickly, Mr. Hayes. But I do want to say, that car show, another great opportunity, another great example of just interested citizens creating something really unique and wonderful for our community that just enhances the character. And speaking of enhancing the character of the community, we are again going to recognize Small Business Saturday for citizens of, well, citizens of the entire country. Black Friday is that day that everybody thinks, oh, let's go shop like crazy. In recent years, people have started to understand the importance of shopping on what we've come to call Small Business Saturday. So to recognize that day, I'm going to invite up Kim Baker and Debbie Haddock from the Gallatin Chamber, and Ms. Rachel from Black Tie Floral, Floral and Gifts?
Floral Design.
Floral Design and Find Gifts. Y'all come over here. And Kim may want to say more about Small Business Saturday, but I just think it's a wonderful opportunity to support our local businesses, but to also recognize how much they do contribute to our community, because I say without our small, local, independent businesses, that we'd be just another one of those vanilla communities that you pass on the interstate that has all the same shops and all the same restaurants. And so, we recognize that in Gallatin, it's our independent businesses that give us a unique flavor and a unique character, and set us apart from lots of other communities and make us special. So with that, I'll turn over to Kim Baker. If she wants to say anything, then I'll read a proclamation.
Now, I think Mayor said that, well, it is what makes us unique, and it's what sets Gallatin apart, so we're excited to have so many, and as we continue to grow, to see different and dynamic businesses come to Gallatin. We will be celebrating Small Business Saturday in a variety of ways. We're partnering with Wilson Bank and Trust, and we're going to have some small business bucks that residents will be able to pick up at the bank and then go and use at small businesses, and small businesses will then be able to turn those in for cash money at the bank. So just another way to get people out, and we'll be out delivering small business goodies all over town. So thank you for celebrating small business with us.
And we certainly appreciate the chamber's support and engagement within the whole community to support this effort. So this proclamation says, whereas the City of Gallatin, Tennessee celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, generating 65.9% of net new jobs from 2000 to 2017. And whereas small businesses employ over 47.5% of the working population in the United States, and whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said that the day encourages them to shop small all year long, and whereas 93% of consumers who reportedly shop small at independently-owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with their friends and family, and whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently-owned businesses was to support their community, and whereas the City of Gallatin supports our local businesses that provide jobs, boost our local economy, preserve our neighborhoods, create community character, and provide important amenities for our citizens, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So with that, I'll present it to Ms. Baker, ladies, Rachel, or Debbie, y'all want to say anything? So Rachel is here representing a small business, and Debbie works with the chamber as well, doing sales for them. So thank you all for being here, and I think Mr. Henshaw's going to take a photo for us. Would you take one with Manti?
Sure.
With sun?
Yeah.
Do you want to go with sun?
Oh, it's okay. Yeah. Let's communicate. And we got it.
And we'll move into the regular agenda at this time. I do want to advise the council that this evening, there is a public hearing and a second reading. Usually, we approve those before we allow that to happen, we did not in this case, but without objection, we will continue. It is the public hearing for the Wash and Roll Car Wash, followed by second reading, which is item number four. So is there objection to having both of those on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward. Item number one is a public hearing on ordinance 01810-51, and for that, Vice Mayor Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is 01810-51, it's ordinance, Gallatin, Tennessee, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning two lots comprising approximately .59 acres from R-15 medium-density residential district to the R-10 medium-density residential district located south of Stanley Drive and east of Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard. Authorized provision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinances providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open on ordinance 01810-51. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward at this time. I see no one, so I'll say public hearing on ordinance 01810-51 is closed. Item two is public hearing on ordinance 01810-52, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Article 11, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations Amending Article 15, Administration and Enforcement, authorizing revisions to be made to the zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing on ordinance 01810-52 is now open, you may come forward now if you wish to speak. See no one indicating they wish to speak, I'll say public hearing on 01810-52 is closed. And item three is public hearing on ordinance 01810-53, Councilman Mayberry is recognized.
Okay, thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning 12 lots comprising 1.30 plus or minus acres from the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District to the PGC Planed General Commercial District, with a preliminary master development plan for Wash and Roll Car Wash located south of Nashville Pike and east of Oscar Smith Drive, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Public hearing.
Is now open on ordinance 01810-53, come forward now if you'd like to speak. I see no one, so I'll say that public hearing on ordinance 01810-53 is closed. Item number four is the second reading on ordinance 01810-53, Councilman Mayberry.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we approve just exactly what I just finished reading on the public hearing.
I have a motion by Councilman Mayberry, a second by Councilman Alexander, is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01810-53, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, so I have six who have voted in favor and one abstention. Item number five is second reading on ordinance 01809-47, Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance, City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning 4.77 acre parcel from R-40 low-density residential district to MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and approving a preliminary master development plan for Nichols Place, located south of Nichols Lane and east of proposed Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard Extension, authorized provision to be indicated on official zoning map, repealing conflict of orders providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilman Camp, is there any Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01809-47, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number six is first reading on ordinance 01810-54, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $1,680 from revenue received from insurance for damage to Greenway railing at intersection of East Broadway and Albert Gallatin Avenue. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander, any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01810-54, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass quietly but unanimously. Item number seven is first reading on ordinance 01811-57, Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order to establish a hotel-motel tax in the City of Gallatin. So moved.
Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Vice Mayor Overton, is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McCully.
I would like to say that for ordinances number 57 and 58, that I recommend that we go ahead and vote on these tonight, but put it back on the agenda for next week so that we can fully discuss them if there are any questions related to the, any of the things that are set forth in this ordinance, because we discussed it at the last meeting, but you didn't have the ability to fully discuss the ordinances that are set out. And I also would tell you that on ordinance 58, I'll go ahead and tell you, there are a couple of stylistic changes to that, and one change in 8-106. I have highlighted that for you, it's on your desk.
So y'all want to discuss or move forward with the vote? We'll move forward with the vote. It's first reading on ordinance 01811-57, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item eight is first reading on ordinance 01811-58, Councilman Camp is again recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order to living a privileged tax upon the occupancy in any hotel or motel or any place with rooms, lodges, or accommodations, or furnished to transients for a consideration of establishing Article 4, Chapter 8 of the Gallatin Municipal Code. So moved.
Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Y'all look at 8106, only the word city is highlighted.
Yes, and it had read city recorder, and we changed that to just the city so that other departments would have access to those records if they needed them.
Makes sense to me. Any further discussion? We will put it back on the work session for next week. But we'll go ahead and vote this evening on first reading on ordinance 01811-58, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number nine is resolution R1811-63, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing PJ Davis to the Gallatin Health and Education, the House of Representatives, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love, is there any discussion? This is resolution R1811-63, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 10 is resolution R1811-64, Councilman Alexander again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing PJ Davis to the Industrial Board, and I so move, Development Board.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love, any discussion? This is resolution R1811-64, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number 11 is resolution R1811-67, and Councilman Hayes is recognized.
This is a resolution amending the policy for public use of city hall facilities. Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander, and as we discussed last week, we have submitted, or we have put in your packet this week, a copy of the old, you know, what we were charging prior, and what we are proposing to change this go-round. Before, we were changing, we were charging $150 for council chambers, $150 for the dining room, and $50 for the kitchen, and what we have in here proposed is $500, $500, and $250 with a $250 deposit versus a $100 deposit that we required before. So that's where we are now. Any questions or discussion? Okay, this is resolution, get back to my agenda? Resolution R1811-67, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us now to other business. Is there any other business that anyone on this council would like to bring forward at this time? Vice Mayor Overton is recognized.
Nick or Zach, will y'all look at, will y'all look at the rental tract at South Water and Factory Street? Tell us what we're going to do with that. It's getting really rough, I mean, really, really bad.
Actually, I have something on the works this, this week.
Yeah, they're working on that one, and also on steam plant, too.
It's really bad.
Have you driven down the steam plant? It's bad, too.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any other business this evening?
At our last council meeting, I was asked to report back on the Blue Jay Way-Nashville Pike traffic signal progress, or maybe there's not been a lot of progress, but I did want to let you know that we did send out the information that was requested by the Lowe's Development on Friday that same week, and tried to call them to follow up, but didn't get a response by email. Got to, tried to follow up with a phone call Tuesday last week, and then left a voicemail then, left another voicemail today, so I've gotten no response from the developer there, but have given the information that they requested. And I think James may want to say something, as I know he's been talking to some folks that have some businesses out on the street, so.
We are still hopeful that Lowe's will go above and beyond what they've already, what we have a letter of credit for them also. I think that's what our conversation is, I encourage us to spend some time making sure we track that conversation down. But in the interest of helping move this project forward and getting it up and running, my office and my board has offered to go ahead and start the engineering on this so that we have an accurate cost for that, so when we go back to Lowe's, we make sure we're asking for exactly the right amount of money. Again, I encourage this body to help us push them to offer up more funds, but with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and get the engineering started on that. We've lost at least one and possibly two tenants in the Blue Jay Way development there because of the lack of a light, so we'd like to move that forward.
Do we need to do something? I have a proposal from a firm, the firm that is actually doing our ITS grant right now, it's about $13,500 is what the proposal is to do the design for the traffic signal.
Counsel, would you will?
We don't have appropriating money, should there be a vote for us?
It really does seem like we should, it should be your board's choice.
Yeah, they'll come out, I just want to make sure that that sets well with.
Yeah, I would say that as we move forward with Lowe's, that we need to encourage them to take that cost as well, or that expense as well.
And I've contacted some of my peers to help us find another door into the Lowe's organization to see if we can get some answers back.
That's good, that's good. Mr. Tallow, did you have anything else?
I did, I wanted to make an announcement. Yesterday, the city opened bids on the Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension Project, and we had four responsive bidders, and the apparent low bid was Jones Brothers Incorporated with a bid of $27,440,488.56. So the short story here is that we do have to vet the bid, make sure that everything is in order, but the good news is, the amount of money that we have appropriated in our bond, about $6 million for this project, and then we have a couple hundred thousand more that's still left in our capital funds, should be enough to handle this project for the city, so we don't have to appropriate any additional funds, as long as the MPO comes through with what they have promised us that they will come through with.
We're confident they will.
Yes, I'm very confident, too. So, good news, we had a great bid, it came in less than what our estimate was, and so I'm very happy, and I hope you are, too.
Yeah, I think that should be a collective yippee, so thank you, thank you all for your work, and I'm excited, and I thought it was just wonderful.
Typically, it takes about a month to award the bid, you have to go through a process with T-DOT to get them to concur with the award, and then usually you'll have two to four weeks to set up the pre-construction meeting after that, so we are getting into the holidays. I would guess that we would have a pre-con at the first of the year, somewhere in January, and then the contractor would be on the clock at that point, it's a 30-month project.
So exciting. Anyone else with any other business this evening? Okay, with that, we will move to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. If you have an item that was not on this evening's agenda that's of concern to you, now would be your time to come forward. Again, we ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Shannon Rogers, 151 Jocelyn Avenue, Gallatin. Just thought I would come up here and do a couple of things. First of all, y'all, we were asked to keep a watch on the Randys project and make sure that there was no more damage or anything like that done after last night's storms than the ones that we've had since the last time I was here. I can assure you that it's still standing, it's still sitting just like it was. There are some events that are happening, most of you are aware of that. We've been aware for longer than you have of what's going on with this. The only surprise we had was how quick they were going to actually auction it off, which kind of tells us some things who are on the inside looking at what's going on. This is a good thing for us, this has been one of the stumbling blocks we've had all along, we need to move forward with a local partner on this, and make this project happen like it needs to happen. We feel like that with someone locally working with us on it, that we can move quickly ahead and can get some things done that we were running into difficulty with, with the current owners. We wish them nothing but the best, and hope that the next time you see me, I'll bring our new partner with us, and we'll be ready to move ahead and make the city really proud of what we're going to do down here. If you have any questions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Oh, good evening, city. My name is Patrick Reeners. I'm three seventeen Malone Drive and we recently had some new children move into neighborhood. And there's some across the street from me and there's some right next door to me that, you know, are playing and sometimes they run outside when their kids, their parents aren't out. So I've already talked to one neighbor, two houses down, that said he wouldn't mind if y'all put a "Children at Play" sign. Or I haven't gone further down the street that way to see if someone would mind if you put a sign up, but I do think it would be helpful to the community with, like, there's three kids now and they test the road. It's like they go out to see how far they go for their parents' yell at them. And the second thing is about deleting body cams and dash cams and getting free lunch. You know, you hear as you go, no free lunch. Well, from my record requests, I found out that the officers that work in this town are getting paid for their lunch. Well, the policy says if they're on duty, they're supposed to have their body cams on. Well, I've done several requests for body cams for officers at lunch. And if you look at twenty officers at twenty bucks an hour per day, that's four hundred bucks a day, twelve thousand a month. It's a lot of money. So regarding that issue, I think it's obstruction of justice. I mean, it's to protect them, it's to protect the people. And I had a circumstance where someone did enter an evidence or recording and they had the wrong timestamp on it and they're written up for having the wrong timestamp. But yet, the ones that don't record it or don't even have it, there's nothing going on. It doesn't really matter, which doesn't really protect the officer or the citizen. And I think that to be a very serious issue. The third issue I have is, you know, I've been doing an extensive investigation into the city system and looking at their policies and it's become so overwhelming that one, between ten and eleven and two and three, it's not enough time to go through all these documents. And I wish the city would look into it a little bit, but obviously, they're not going to do it. And we all know how important videos are. I mean, thank God for some videos, you know. I talked to a manager the other day at Save-A-Lot and he told me Gladiator Video, you know, which can really help save somebody in circumstances, depending on what someone says and what the video shows. So I really think that our officers out there that do a good job deserve the protection of their body cams. And if they're working and getting paid for their lunch and the policy says if they're on duty, they have to have their body cams on, it should be on. And the third thing is, listen, it's been about almost ten years I've been working on this fluoride issue and not one person has come yet and told me, hey, you know, my friends live in the country and the dentist gives them Prozac to put in their kid's bathtub. So if we just did a little bit of simple math, for grins and giggles, you know, we're all trying to help the community, you would need literally ten milligram pills times sixteen every day. You'd make a fifty gallon bathtub for your child. So just, you know, whenever you take some aspirin or whatever, just pretend they're Prozac and think that you would have to take sixteen of these and put them in your kid's bathtub to equal what the city's doing. But yet, the city isn't giving people in the country that have well-water fluoride. So again, obviously, it's been years, no one's doing any. Lebanon doesn't do fluoride, Macon County doesn't do fluoride, Sumner, Tennessee doesn't do fluoride, Jackson doesn't do fluoride. I talked to the mayor in Columbia for like twenty minutes and they stopped fluoride. So you guys can do what you want to do. I just want the community to realize that if you guys support fluoride so much, why aren't you helping the people in the communities that don't have fluoride in our city? I mean, where's the effort there? I mean, what would it take for you guys to say, hey, we just support the people's teeth in the city, but yet, we're going to kick homeless people off of benches at the library? They ain't got no place to sleep, but we're going to help your teeth. So whatever you guys can do, I'd appreciate it. I mean, I look out for kids, obviously.
Patrick, why are you so hard on our police officer?
They kidnapped me. Yeah, yeah. It's Rena's verse true. You can look it up. We got deposition tomorrow.
You talking about our police department wasting money? Why do you waste so much money coming up here and getting all these requests that you come up here and get and spend thousands and thousands of our taxpayers' dollars getting these requests that you get? Why do you do that if you think they're wasting money? Why are you wasting their money?
Well, I've gotten a lot of results from these requests, sir. I got a lot of results.
You don't think they get results when they eat lunch?
What? They get results when they eat lunch? What kind of results?
They get to eat lunch.
They get paid to get paid to eat lunch? Thirteen thousand dollars a month or thirteen thousand dollars a month to feed their officers?
Okay, this is public comment. We have extended, we have surpassed the five-minute mark.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on non-agenda-related items this evening?
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Austin, Mr. Brinkley. They've been signing people up to vote for years and I just want to encourage people to continue to vote. Thank you all for what you do. We deeply appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
And people do have twenty-two minutes left to vote this evening. So if you show up at the polls and you're in line before seven o'clock, you can still vote. So with no other business here this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, second, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. I do wish everyone luck this evening and the election and thank you all for being here and look forward to seeing you again.